Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for indication and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Let us bow our heads and pray. Our Father which art in heaven, we thank you again for your grace and your mercy and allowing this council to meet one more time. We thank you for your hedge protection you have put around this city and we continue to prosper and do well in these trying times. Well, as you come down being amidst of this meeting and dad our conversation and our action, let me do good judgment for our city and our citizens. Well, in his blessing and our blessing, your son Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Olber, the role, please.
Carrie Rock, Ward 1.
Here.
Kate Siff, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Rock, Ward 3.
Here.
Kevin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Catherine, Ward 6.
Thank you. Our first order of business is to swear in our new city clerk. And while Ms. Olmer will handle those and swearing in Ms. Drake, I do want to thank Meredith. I'm delighted to see her stay with the organization going on to other things, but I want to thank you for your time and your diligence and your professionalism in your time as serving as clerk. And like I said, we're just still happy to have you as part of the organization and doing other things. And we'll also welcome Ms. Drake. So if you'll please do the honors.
Thank you.
Mayor, you all actually probably need to appoint her as a city clerk as well.
All right, you will raise your right hand. You found square or currently before the Constitution of the United States of the United States, you are in all respects the representative of Cartersville. And then you will basically be charged to be here in your office. You will sign your plea.
I'll give him a moment for posterity. He does it all.
Thank you very much. It's all yours.
Wow.
All right, so our illustrious city attorney advised that we probably need to have a formal motion and a vote to accept Julia Drake as our new city clerk. So the chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept her as the new clerk.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 And motion carries unanimously. We will now approve our count and welcome aboard Julia. It's good to have you officially in that role. We'll now approve our council meeting minutes from the July 16th meeting. And council, you've had the opportunity to review those minutes. And a motion to, or any changes would need to be made now, or if not, a motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, it's not a change in the minutes, but I can't remember 100%. Randy, did y'all do a separate Zoom broadcast for the zoning things at that meeting at all? Okay. I just want to make sure if we did that we referenced that in there.
Thank you for waiting till after we approved the minutes to bring that up.
Well, I mean, it would just be reference. So it didn't matter. I waited.
Proceed. Our next item is Z 20-02. Mr. Manino, get us back on track, please.
Thank you, mayor and council. First, for the record, this property has been properly posted and advertised. Adjacent property owners have been notified. And the adopted standards for exercise of zoning powers have been evaluated. With that, this went before planning commission. This is a rezoning request from OCGC. This is the property of the old fire station number three. It was purchased from the city, I believe, back in October of last year. With that, the planning commission did hear the rezoning request from Office Commercial to General Commercial for the use of veterinarian clinic. And with that, they did unanimously recommend approval of this application. Again, this is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, sir. Open up a public hearing for file KZ 20-02. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time. And as you do, if you would please open with your name and your address for our clerk, please.
My name is Lee Perkins. Address 327 East Main Street, Cartersville. Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you. I am here representing the petitioner, Lisa Walker, in this matter. Everything Randy has proposed or presented is pretty much the facts of the situation as far as just wanting to rezone this property for use as a veterinary clinic. Dr. Walker operates a veterinary clinic just down the road from this and is going to move to this new location. And she is here and I'm here if y'all have any questions or comments, but we are just here for that.
Any questions for Mr. Perkins? Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for Z 20-02. And council, I will turn it over you for consideration.
Most to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manino, next item, please.
Thank you again, mayor and council. This property, 313 Jackson Street, was part of the first-time homebuyers program. The property owner has fulfilled their obligations in the first-time homeowners program. And they're looking to sell the property with that. They would need to get the lien release that the city has on it. And staff does recommend your approval. This is a standard procedure for this program.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions? All you two approve. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brock, you have the next item, please.
Yes, mayor and council. This is the annual dues request for membership and participation in the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission. The total dollar amount is $21,760, and that covers fiscal year July 1 of 2020 through June 30 of 2021. And your approval is recommended.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Timmer.
Yes, the acceptance of this resolution will authorize the execution of the CARES Act relief fund, terms and conditions, as well as the acceptance of the grant payments from the state. We're eligible for about $341,000 for Phase 1 Round 1, excuse me. And this resolution will also serve to direct and authorize the official representative or designated the city to apply and to receive the grant funding.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? If there is not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Sanders, you are next with our local maintenance improvement grant, otherwise known as L-MIG.
Thank you, sir. We're seeking permission for the mayor to sign the L-MIG application and related documents. Part of that application is a project list, so you're also given consent for the list of streets, there are six city streets we would like to resurface this year. And the grant is $252,241.77. It requires a 30% match. And the difference between the project, estimated project cost and the grant and match will be paid for out of the 2020 splotched road streets and category.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Sanders on this? And if not a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tommy. Mr. Gillum, you have a cluster of contracts.
Good evening, mayor and council. Yeah, these are seven contract renewals for our program providers. First one being Bell Film USA to provide yoga classes. 30% of the gross registration fees will come back to the city if it's held at the city facilities. If it's held at their location, 10% comes back to the city. Cartersville Senior Fit, which is Silver Sneakers Classes, they own a 10%. Elite Athletics, which will be offering a younger age baseball league, as well as clinics and camps, and a possible girls softball league, they're at 20%. Halftime Sports, which would be basketball leagues, off-season clinics, and summer camps, they're at 20%. North Georgia Rack with, starting a lacrosse program with clinics and camps for boys and girls. Winter Flag Football League, general and sports-specific camps, and the possibility of girls field hockey, they're at 10%. Top Shelf with concessions, they're at 15%. And then wire-to-wire running with running and running-related program services, they're at 25%. So coming forward with renewal with your approval.
Thank you. And I did want to note, these are all renewals and things that you've brought us in the past, and you're just trying to get them all on one set time.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Renewal time. Thank you very much. Any questions for Tom on any of these items? And again, council, handing all these contracts is one motion, and if nobody has any other questions or discussion, a motion is in order. Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like side? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Hampton, you are next up with traffic signal maintenance agreement.
Good evening, mayor and council. Been a while. My first time coming back. What I have today is a contract for traffic signal maintenance with the city of Rome. They are a kind of an expert for traffic signals in the Northwest Georgia area. They do traffic signal maintenance for the county and some other municipalities. And we were looking for someone to give us some more experience. They have certified traffic signal engineers and people that are highly qualified in the actual devices that go inside the control cabinets. So basically what you've seen is the contract with them that includes them doing annual inspections and also doing repair workforce on an as-needed basis. This is a budgeted expense, and it has been reviewed by Keith and approved. So we're asking for authorization for you to sign that contract.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hampton on this item? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Porter, you've got the next couple, please.
Yes, mayor. The first one is a renewal of Ezra Annual Maintenance for GIS. It's $6,700. It is a budget item.
Questions, comments, or motions? Most to approve. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Next item, mayor, is USIS. It's our third-party administrator for our workers' compensation. It's for them to process all claims for the city. It's $10,147.50. Recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Fire Marshal Hathaway, you are up with a repair at Fire Station 4.
Good evening, mayor and council. So I'm here to respectfully request approval of a budgeted repair project for Fire Station number 4. This repair will remove and replace a section of asphalt along the side of the building that has developed ruts over time from our trucks. So we'll need to remove a strip that's about 17 feet wide and 120 feet long and replace it with six inches of 4,000 psi fiber-filled concrete. We feel that that'll make a permanent solution for this roadway right here that gets heavy road traffic every day from our trucks. Cardinal Public Works will be doing that driveway repair, and then we'll have an independent contractor to do the gate loop once the concrete cures. So the concrete repair cost is about $6,000. The gate loop install estimate is $3,880 for a total of $9,880. Because of any unknown problems that may come up, we're going to ask for an amount up to, but not to exceed $12,000 for this project. This is below our budgeted amount for it, and we thank you in advance for any positive consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for Fire Marshal Hathaway on this? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Jones, you've got a group of five tonight. Light week for you.
Good evening, everybody. First up, we need to purchase some meters for our distribution and collection office. This is just a restock of inch-and-a-half and two-inch meters. It's a total of 19 meters, I believe. The total cost is $12,660. This is a sole source from Delta Municipal. Delta Municipal is the Neptune Dealer distributor in Georgia. And we sole source meters, or we standardize on meters for a couple of reasons. One is, in particular with these meters, they're rigid piped. So we need to have a specific lay length, and by sticking with the same brand, we know we get that lay length every time. The other reason is it reduces the number of repair parts that we're required to stock to work on these things. And the third reason is one that's sort of playing the long game is that as this equipment becomes obsolete, by standardizing, we can take a meter out of service here, rob parts for that to fix this one over here. And while these particular meters don't fit this bill, when you get up in six, eight, and 10-inch meters, you can talk about a meter costing anywhere from $15,000 to $25,000. And there's a significant savings in being able to move those parts around. So that's why we sole source on these meters.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or discussion for Mr. Jones on this item? If not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please, Bob.
Yes, sir. Next up is our annual water testing contract. We've done this for a number of years. It's with the Environmental Protection Division Drinking Water Lab. It is for all of the regulatory testing related to drinking water. It's a contract price of $9,200. That price has been stable for the last seven years. It's based on population. We just haven't reached the next population tier to make that go up. The advantage of using EPD is you get 100% method compliance. You also get data entry as part of their services, too. So provided you get them the bottle with the sample, you are not going to be out of compliance for failure to enter the data, to enter the data correctly, or the lab that you use used the wrong procedure. You eliminate all those things, and that's a good value add to their service. So we do recommend that for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Truck repair.
The truck repair, yes. We used two tractor-trailer trucks to remove biosolids out of the wastewater plant. Our 98 Kenworth developed a significant oil leak recently. We took that to the city garage. They, in turn, took that to Matthews to have a quote done. Matthews provided a quota of $8,600. And in discussing it with Bill Trot at the garage, he said, given the age of the truck and the potential for things to crop up, he would recommend that we add $3,000 to the Matthews quote just to be safe. So we'd ask for a not-to-exceed of $12,000 to account for some of those unknowns that we may get into when they dive into the repair of the truck.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order. Motion to approve. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Bob.
Yes, sir. The Roger Station Water Main Project is progressing quite well. We are at a point where we are anticipating crossing Caswell Road. And in doing so, both working with the contractor and with our design engineer, we noticed that it might be to our advantage to take a different route. And that's what's necessitating this easement. By purchasing the easement from Mr. Allen and rerouting the water line this way, it's a wash for cost to us. So there's no increase in cost to the project. But what it does is it locates our line in such a way that when the eventual intersection improvement comes from Iron Belt and Caswell Road, we will be out of the way and not have to incur any cost to move this line again somewhere down the road. So we'd ask your approval of that purchase and ask that either the mayor and/or city attorney be authorized to execute all documents related to it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, a motion is in order.
I'll second that.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Final one for you, Bob.
Yes, sir. Last, related to the same project. This is the Roger Station Water Main Replacement. The project began in earnest in early February, and as we all know, there were some significant changes that came to the world later in that month. In addition to that, we had a ton of rain in the spring that caused the contractor to get off to a slow start. Our projects have a significant completion date that bookend the project, and there are liquidated damages assessed if the contractor fails to meet that date. Because of the COVID delays, the weather-related delays, contractors asked for a 90-day extension of that date. And we feel like that is more than reasonable and would ask that you approve that amendment to the contract. There is no cost to the city. It does not increase the cost of the project at all.
Yep. Thank you. Very good. Any questions for Bob on this item? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, Mr. Reinhardt, you have a series of millage rate settings in our financial report. Fire away.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. The first item is for the Cartersville Business Improvement District Millage Rate Set. This will be the first reading of this, and there is no vote will be taken tonight. The business improvement district is made up of a downtown Cartersville business districts. These businesses owners have been self-assessing their property tax for many years. And these funds are used to improvements, for improvements in the downtown area. The DDA authorizes this to be done. The DDA board requests the city approval of the recommended business property tax millage of 1.279 mil for 2020. This is the rollback rate. And again, this is the first reading, and there is no vote required tonight.
Okay.
Second item I have for you is the Cartersville School System 2020 Millage Rate Set. This is, this will be at 14.576 mils. The Cartersville City School System has recommended this to the board. The rollback rate was 12.964 mils as a result of the school system using the last year's rate, if you will, which is above the rollback rate. They are now required to hold three public hearings. Those public hearings will be addressed, first one is on, will be held on Thursday, August 13th at 5:00 p.m. Second one will be on Thursday, August 20th at 8:00 a.m. And the last one will be Thursday, August 20th at 7:00 p.m. here in the council chambers with the, the last one will be at the next council meeting. The city council approves the school board's recommended tax millage rate for the city residents where all the property taxes collected go to the city of Cartersville School System. Again, this is the first reading, and there is no required vote tonight. Next item I have is the Cartersville City MNO Millage Rate to be set at 2.91 mils. Property taxes received for the Cartersville MNO property tax collection are used for the general city government operations, which include the police, fire, recreation, public work, et cetera. This is known as the general fund. The proposed 2020 millage rate of 2.91 mil is the rollback rate. Again, this is the first reading, and there are no hearings or voting, I'm sorry. There are no voting for tonight's meeting. And the last millage rate is the Geo Parks and Recreation Property Tax Millage Rate to be set at .72 mils. The citizens of Cartersville approved a referendum in November of 2014, authorizing the city to issue bonds to be used to pay for renovations and improvements within the parks and recreation and building properties. The bonds were issued on a 10-year payback period. In order to make the scheduled bond payments, the city is assessing a property tax millage of .72 mils. This is below the 2020 rollback rate of .77 mils. Again, this is the first reading, and there is no vote to be required tonight.
Thank you very much for those.
And apparently, apparently I failed to forward the necessary paperwork to have it. I apologize.
We would much rather blame Randy for this, Tom, than you. Please, feel free.
I apologize once again.
I think we all figured it out. It's going to be just fine, and you'll wrap up this public portion with the monthly financial statement.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and council, tonight I am presenting the financial report for May 2020 and comparing it to May 2019. In the general fund, revenues increased over last May by $3.3 million. Expenses increased by $1.5 million. Two areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis is local office and sales tax have a decrease there of about $26,000. Billing permits and inspection fees have a decrease there of about $23,000. Water and super fund, revenues increased over last year by $368,000. Expenses increased by $10.8 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, and increased capital expenses. And the gas fund, revenues decreased from last year by $3.3 million. Expenses decreased by $10.3 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase gas, increased debt service expense, and decreased capital expenditures. In the electric fund, revenues decreased over last year by $528,000. Expenses decreased by $1.5 million. This is due to decreased personnel costs, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase electricity, and decreased capital expenses. In the stormwater fund, revenues increased from last May by $100,000. Expenses decreased by $230,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased over last May by $502,000. Expenses increased by $254,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. In fiber optics fund, revenue increased from last May by $66,000. Expenses decreased by $103,000. And this is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. In the cash position for the month of May, total restricted cash decreased, and the restricted cash increased a little bit.
I do. Just to note, I would say this is, May is typically a down month for us, but this is a little bit lower as far as all funds being down, with the exception of stormwater. So I would say this is the first month that we really started to see the COVID impact hit our budget.
And if you, if we'll note, we, this is, I think, the second month that we've had a decrease in loss revenues. And that loss is getting a little bit larger, so.
As we, and I guess looking at the CARES Act stuff, you and I kind of talked about it. When that funding gets approved, will that backfill some of this, and do we just amend the financials? Or do we just get that moving forward, or how does that?
So ideally, once Phase 1 Round 2 begins and we realize that we can submit revenue replacement, it will go back and fill in. We probably need to look at it as a percentage across all funds to figure out how to proportionally give it back. But it would, my understanding is it would be a 2021 budget amendment that would come before you all with accepting that money to be allocated to the different departments.
Even though the expenditures happened in 20, a lot of them have happened in 2020. And still, we did get the money, the revenues until 2021.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Tom on the financial statement?
Thank you.
Sir, we are going, the chair is going to entertain a motion in just a second to go into closed session for purposes of personnel. I will say that we can't adjourn this meeting formally until after we get out of closed session. I will assure everybody here that when we get out, after that session, there will be no action taken by council. You are certainly welcome to stay in here and wait for us to come back in and do that. And if not, just know that's, you have the option, but that's what's going to happen when we're at the end of this. Right now, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session for purposes of personnel.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We shall go into closed session for purposes of personnel. Thank you.